I call to order this meeting of the Oberlin School District Board of Education. Today's meeting is a tax budget and federal grant hearing followed by our organizational meeting.
Yes, tax budget.
Bob?
Okay. Tax budget, this tax budget, again, we, we turn the tax budget into the county auditor. This is for the 2024-2025 school year. So it has nothing to do with the current school year that we're in, but we're projecting our expenses and showing the need for our property taxes so the auditor can allocate property taxes. There's really no changes to the budget from last year except for special revenue, the third item down on the budget. That's down about a million dollars because we are no longer going to have ESIR's funding next year. We won't have ARP funding next year and we won't have the literacy grant next year for federal governments. And that's about 1.5 million dollars that we're spending this year on that stuff. Most of the ESIR's money will fall back into the general fund. The literacy grant hopefully will stay self-contained already inside the general fund. So, um, the other funds we have, we do have the debt fund that again is showing a negative balance because we borrowed money from the general fund two years ago to pay off the notes because of the high interest rates. And the county auditor is keeping the bond issue at 4.74 so that we can pay back the general fund as the collections come in. And then capital improvement projects, that, that fund is the rest of the building fund that we have left, the NEXUS money that the board has set aside for phase two. And then it's also the capital improvement levy, which again will be passing a resolution in January to not collect the one, one mil of the two mil levy that we have. So we have three mils voted in, but the board, when the initial building project bond got passed, said that they would not collect one mil of that to offset the cost of the debt fund. So, um, I have it forecasted accordingly that we would not collect that. But the board will be passing a resolution at the January meeting. Other than that, we have the food service, the custodial funds, and the private trust funds. Bringing us to a total of... Available to spend would be 38,526,851. Estimated what we will spend is 24,792, which would give us an all-fund cash balance at the end of 2025 of 13,734,851. I can answer any questions? If not, the budget hearing's over and we will move into the organizational meeting.
Thanks, Bob. Please call, well, I'm calling to order the regular, I mean, the organizational meeting for today. And, um, oh, I think first we start with swearing in of new members. So...
So Ken, would you like to stand and be sworn in? You have the sheet of paper there. If you could read that off, please, for everybody?
I, Ken Stanley, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and the policies of Oberlin City School District. During my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of the office to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Ms. Garrett?
I'm supposed to raise my hand? I, Janet Garrett, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and the policies of Oberlin City School District. During my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of the office to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Welcome aboard, new board member. Yes.
Can I do that? Okay, so please call the roll.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for the organizational meeting. So moved?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions, additions, changes about the agenda for the organizational meeting? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Now, we will move to nominations and election for board president. I am the president pro tem and I will seek nominations for the president for the upcoming year, fiscal year or calendar year, excuse me.
I nominate Farah Ameca.
I second.
I third.
It's been properly moved or nominated and seconded and third. Any questions, discussion, any of that good stuff? Okay. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
I will now entertain nominations for vice president.
I nominate Joanne Stagel.
I second. Can I do that?
Yes, you can.
Okay, it's been properly nominated and seconded. Any questions, discussion? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we will move to the swearing in of the president and vice president and absorption of chairs. So we're already in these positions, but we are going to go ahead and just do this as a tradition. Do we have to stand? Yep. Then we go one at a time?
Yep, one at a time.
Hi.
You'll say you need to mic.
Here, I'll take it out.
There you go.
I, Farah Ameca, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and will perform faithfully the duties of the president of the Board of Education of the Oberlin City School District, Lorain County, Ohio during my continuance in office.
Thank you.
I'm just going to take yours.
I, Joanne Stagel, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and will perform faithfully the duties of the vice president of the Board of Education of the Oberlin City School District, Lorain County, Ohio during my continuance in office.
Thank you.
Copy done.
Congratulations.
Just pop it in.
Okay, now you have to assume the chairs. Oh, wait.
No switching. Okay, so we did that part. Okay, now we are moving on to the establishment of meeting dates and times. The meetings are to be held here at the Oberlin Elementary School at 6:00 PM unless otherwise noted. Do I go through that or...
We can go through it, it doesn't matter.
Okay, yeah.
We're looking to meet at the, um, fourth Tuesday of every month unless there's a problem, and there is in March. It would be moved to the 19th. We'd also looking at scheduling a work session on March 5th. September 10th would be a work session. And I think there's one other exception would be, um, December would be moved up to the 17th. Otherwise, all meetings would be held at the fourth Tuesday of the month.
I have two conflicts I'm hoping we can work around. June 25th, I'm out of town. Can we move that?
We can, it works with everybody. Move it to the 18th?
Move it to the 18th, does that work for everybody?
18th should work for me.
We're here all June, right?
June, yeah.
Should be fine for me.
Does that work for you, Rosa?
Yeah.
All right.
Works for me.
18th?
And then in October, the 22nd falls during fall break and I'll be out of town. So if we could move that to either the 15th or the 29th?
I probably prefer the 15th.
15?
I don't have a problem with either of those.
Janet, is that okay with you?
I think so.
Okay.
Now, some of us, I don't think have planned that far ahead, Joanne.
You're special in that regard.
And again, we can, we can change this later on, but this will, this way we can post it and give everybody... This is when it's planning on. And again, that October 15th would be at the, um, that would start out with the high school tour, the elementary tour, and then the meeting.
Okay. Okay, any, no other, everything else is fine? Any holidays or anything that we're, did we fix election day?
Yes.
Nope, no problem with election day?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, well, March 19th is the primary day, but I don't know that that really is...
Yeah.
A big issue. Okay, any other?
Um, the 17th, my, December 17th, sorry, might be interesting, but we can play it by ear.
Okay.
I have to see, that's the week we do like the five different distributions. And it should be okay. Yeah.
Okay.
So, okay, there's no vote or anything on that? Okay. So that's the dates.
We'll vote after we talk about the committees.
Okay, after all that. Okay. So next, we have the appointment of board representatives to the following boards, committees, subcommittees, and organizations for 2024. So, do I go, I can go through this? Okay, so for the Ohio School Board Association Legislative Liaison, we had Ann who has just ended her term on the board, so she can't do that again. But Janet has expressed an interest in taking over that role. Is there anyone else who would be interested in that, such that we need to have a conversation?
I think Janet's perfect for that one.
No, should be Janet.
So we'll put Janet on that one, that's pretty easy. We have the Oberlin Schools Endowment Fund Board of Trustees. So we have Joanne as our representative from last year. And it's just one person on there?
Yes.
Okay.
And Bob comes to that one, too.
He does, okay. So are you interested in continuing in that role?
Yeah, I'm happy to stay on that one, I love that one.
Okay. Anybody else interested in that one for any reason that we should discuss? Okay, so we'll keep Joanne there.
So, just to clarify the rules, we could have two people on some of them. So Janet, if you wanted to jump on either of these, you could do so without, well, you've already had the first one. But any of these that come up, you're welcome to jump on them even if there's another name, but we can't have three.
And there's some that we have to have two, like finance.
Okay.
Right? Right, Bob?
We have to have two?
Yes.
Okay, so, but you said there's only one for legislative, but we could have two for legislative?
You could have two, but...
Okay. Well, traditionally it's been one. Okay, all right. Anybody interested in adding, being added to the two that we just discussed? Okay, now hearing none. Moving on to the next, we've got Technology Applications and Education Committee. We have Ken on that one. Are you okay with continuing in that role? You're interested in switching?
Continue, I could switch, doesn't matter.
Either one, okay. Anyone interested in a Technology Applications Committee? I got silence. Okay, I think it's you, Ken, and thank you. And again, I guess if somebody wanted to hop on there with him, we could have two. Okay. Next, we have the Policy Committee. That's Joanne and I. I've been on that one, I think, since I've been on the board and I like it. According to norm, we're fabulous.
Yes, you are.
He gives us lots of kudos and pats on the back as we ask him a thousand questions and tag team it. So I'm definitely interested in staying on that one. How about you, Joanne?
Yeah, I think it would be good for the two of us to stay on that one until we finish going, at least going through the policy manual.
Policy review, okay. Anybody else have an interest or disagree with that?
I have an interest in thanking you two for doing it, especially since you are going through the whole thing. It's a lot of work, and Bob and Dr. Hall as well. Yeah, it's a ton of work.
Yes, well, thank you, we definitely appreciate that. Okay, so we, I agree with Joanne that we should stay the course, so we will stay on that committee. And then we have the Finance and Audit Committee, which has Ken and Joanne on it. And when it comes to finances, I don't think anybody's going to let Ken step away. So we won't put that out there unless you have a huge protest. Joanne, are you interested in staying on that one?
I'm happy to pass it on if someone else would like to do it. If you, if you, I don't know if you're interested in that at all. Yeah, I'm also happy to stay. I feel like I've finally gotten a handle on, you know, I mean, I still come to Bob's office and ask questions often, but...
So it is a good committee if you want to learn how the finances and everything work well. So, for future reference, but are you interested in that one? Are you good with, okay, all right. So we will leave it as Ken and Joanne. Then we have the Town and Gown, um, which I've been on that one. That's another one that I think I've been on since I joined the board. I'm happy to stay in that role. And then Rosa is a member as well, the other representative. Are you interested in staying, want to switch, don't care?
I don't care.
Say it again?
I don't care.
Okay. Anybody else interested in doing Town and Gown with me?
If somebody else wants it, fine dandy, but I'll stay on it.
Speak now or forever hold your peace. No one will be offended if you want to...
No.
Join and have Rosa move. I don't want to change committees, but... Okay, so it'll be Rosa and me again. And then we have the Lorain County JVS and...
That's number nine.
Number what?
That's item nine, but you can talk about it here.
Oh, we have to, okay, it's an appointment, okay, so I can talk about what that is. So it's actually participation on another board, so the JVS Board, where we are allowed to have a representative. Traditionally, the representative has been an actual board member. Over the last several years, Ann Shom, as a board member, was our representative on that board. If we do not have a board member here who's interested in taking that place, and we have not had any applications come from anyone in the community, because a person in the community could serve as well, then we would appoint Ann to serve again in that role based on her tenure experience and her background. Is there anyone currently on the board who would like to be that representative for the JVS Board?
It's a three-year commitment also.
It's a three-year commitment. And the term is starting again this year, so three full years. Okay, so nobody on the board is interested and we don't have any other applicants. So that one is a separate item...
Yes.
That we will vote on just after we finish these committees. Okay, um, so our recommendation is going to be Ann. That's why she's here, thanks, Ann. Okay, and then Strategic Planning Subcommittee's are next. We have the Communication Committee, which we have Ann and Rosa as representatives on that committee. And again, since Ann is no longer on the board, she will not be a representative there. Rosa, are you interested in continuing on that committee?
I can.
You can, okay. Is there anyone else who's interested in communications?
I would like to know what that involves.
Okay, what do you all do, Rosa?
That is an excellent question.
The committee works with our PR person, Melissa, alumni, making focus and direction for district communication efforts and the vision for district communicating information now. So they may come up with new technology, new different, um, one of the things came from onboarding for our new employees, making a handbook for them as well. So they come up with a lot of different ideas. And that's been instrumental of a lot of things. We came from that group, from alumni connections to boosters coming back up and running. Athletic boosters came up back from there. So it's a very active group.
So are you saying though, with the examples that you just gave, is that information that was coming in from the community or in different parts of the district that this committee then kind of responded to and tried to help?
Yes, yes. They make goals and things from our, based on our strategic plan, and then we'll implement a check on progress of the goals that were made.
Okay, so including the boosters and alumni association? Okay, that makes sense to me. Anyone interested in joining that committee with Rosa? Or two people who want to replace the two of them?
Because apparently I don't know what that is going on.
I can be persuaded.
I think you'd be good in that role.
You would be good in that role.
Okay, so we have Janet and Rosa again. Because I don't hear anybody else wanting to join that one, okay. Then we have the Educational Programming Committee, that has Joanne on it. That's the other Strategic Planning Subcommittee. Joanne, are you okay with staying in that role?
Yeah, I've been on that one since before I was on the board, since it started, so I would love to.
Okay.
Love to stay on that one.
Okay. And now on this one, can we have two people as well, if somebody was interested?
Sure.
I think on any of these, we can have two.
Okay.
Since there's five of us, one of them has to have two.
Yeah.
Right, exactly, okay. Anybody else interested in that one for the Educational Programming Committee?
Can I, again, ask what, what do they do?
So in that one, we really talk about sort of what the focus of the education specific, the educational programming in the district specifically is. I don't know if we have to, I guess what we should have done is given you notes from all of these committees so that you could have looked at them in advance. And they, all of these committees meet quarterly and are part of the strategic plan. And, um, for the educational planning specifically, we talk about like what kind of training the teachers are going through and how we want, you know, what we want. So not necessarily what curriculum they're using, because that's part of, you know, someone's job, but, you know, the educational goals as a whole as a district. It's a great committee.
And these meetings, these meetings tend to happen quarterly at most.
Yeah.
Yeah, at most is right.
The other answer is, I think, that basically since we have only one in each of these three, Janet, you can, you can join any of these three at any time. Having your name on just kind of gives you that additional responsibility.
We can add people after today, right?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Just because your name's not there doesn't mean that you're not invited to come.
Well, you could try them all out.
No, it'll take a while.
Or, you know, I, I think, again, we, we don't want to, we're not encouraged to have three, three members at any one.
Yeah, we can't have that.
There's a meeting, some meeting, yeah.
And Janet, if you want to wait a few, they have the notes, meeting notes and things online. So if you go to our website, Strategic Planning, you'll have different notes and things from some of the meetings there to get a better idea of what they're discussing.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay. Okay, so we'll leave Joanne on this one for now. And then if you want to be added, just let me know. And then Facilities and Finance Committee, well, there's that word finance again, so we got Ken on this one. So again, unless you really want to get off for some reason, we'll leave you there. But if anybody would like to join Ken on the Facilities and Finance Committee, and do you want to talk a little bit about what the, this committee does as it relates to facilities and the finances, Ken?
I'll let Bob speak to that one.
This, we, what we do is we do a five-year plan on facilities, what, what we see. We talk a lot about equipment repair, stuff like that. We also bring in the five-year forecast, talk about that. And then also, we look at communications, education, and make sure that we have finances available to keep those programs going also. What we try to do with technology and with curriculum is every, and athletics, we have a five-year rotational plan so that we can make sure that we spread costs out equally. So we won't have a major, major improvement in athletics at the same time that we might do a English curriculum that costs $200,000. So we just try to keep everything spread out so that we're hitting everything equally each year and we don't have spikes in our expenses.
So anyone interested in joining Ken on that one? Okay, hearing no one. And then the last one, so we'll leave Ken on there. On the last one is the Student and Family Support Committee. I've been on that committee since the beginning of my time on the board. It represents like the social, emotional aspects of our district and the different type of programming and different approaches to social, emotional that we implement here in the district. PBIS was a big part of that, RTI, all these acronyms that you learn about if you join that committee. I, that was part of the reason why I wanted to join the board was because of experiences that my children had as students in the district around social, emotional, trying to meet the needs of each child. I know we have plenty of students, but they all have different needs. And so the district has moved in a, a good direction of trying to have a multi-tiered approach to that. That's MTSS.
She's got these down pat.
Yes, and so in implementing those approaches to educating our children, our committee gets together to just basically find out what kind of training we're doing, find out how we're doing on implementation, figuring out if there's any different types of approaches that have, we've become aware of that we want to try out. And then also doing a little bit of a check with whatever data we can get and following up with the building leaders and the administrators to see, you know, hey, are you really doing this and how's it impacting our students? So there's, the thing about, I think this is true of all of these committees, we have administrators on the teams, we have teachers, and we have community members in addition to board members. So when you look at kind of the makeup of the committees, you'll see how different folks in the community are represented. And for someone who's lived in the community for a while, you, you know, it'll be a light bulb, like, oh, yeah, these are the right people to be here, so. So that's the one that I'm on, and clearly, because of the way I just spoke about it, I want to stay. But there's room for another person, so if you'd be interested in that one, you can join that one with me.
All right.
You want to join that one?
Sure.
Okay, great, thanks, Janet. Okay, so it'll be me and Janet on the Student and Family Support Committee. So, got that note, we got a new member.
All right.
Okay, so that's all of our committees and we have all of our assignments. So now, I guess I need to move...
We'll do seven and eight together, yeah.
Okay, so I don't, okay, great. So now, we are going to vote on seven and eight. And I will entertain a motion to approve the appointments that we have identified and the dates that we've identified in seven and eight.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, so it's been properly moved and seconded. We've had plenty of discussion, but are there any questions or anything at this point? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Okay, and so now, we're moving to the specific, the appointment of a representative to the Lorain, to the Lorain County JVS for a three-year term. That term is from January 2024 to December 2026. The individual that has been identified is Ann Shom, who has graciously agreed to continue in that role if so appointed. I will entertain a motion to appoint her to that role for the next three-year term.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, so it's been properly moved and seconded. Any questions, discussion?
Obviously, I'm thrilled, Ann, that you're willing to do this. I'm curious, as, I mean, you usually sit right up here with us. How would, you know, how would you communicate back to us?
Yeah, please.
I'll have to turn it on.
So my plan is after each meeting that I will provide some kind of summary report of anything that was relevant on it. And then if things happen in the interim, I, I figure I'm going to report probably to Farah directly and I'll copy the two of you.
Okay. That sounds good. And would you be, if for some reason we needed you to show up here and share something with us, would you, with advance notice, would you be willing to come?
Absolutely.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
So I, I wonder if there's a way that that could go straight into our minutes? Because I, you know, I'm concerned that, I think the community, what you have to say about the JVS has always been useful, you know, to me and, and I think to the community. I'd like to make sure that gets out to the community.
Yeah, we'll just include whatever she sends us right in the minutes.
Okay.
Does that work for you?
Yes, absolutely. And one of the other things that I already have been doing is making sure that the communications that come out from our marketing, from the JVS Marketing Department, make it to the Oberlin, to Melissa, because we seem to still have some email issues getting through to her, so. So yes, so, so yes, I'm happy to continue and whatever you need me to do.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you, Ann.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay, so that was our only question, which was a very good... Okay, so that was our only question, which was a very good one, thank you, Ken. Okay, hearing no other questions or discussion, please call the roll.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Thank you, Ann. So it's been approved.
Thanks, Ann.
Okay, so now we're moving on to Board Items A through J. And I will entertain a motion to approve those items.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Um, Dr. Hall, do you want to go through that stuff?
Yes. Item A is approval of a 24-25 tax budget. Item B is approval to authorize treasurer request advance of property taxes during Lorain County Auditor. Item C, approval to authorize the treasurer to invest all inactive funds, investments more than 12 months. Item D, resolution expense with the reading of the minutes during board meetings. Item E is resolution to approve Lorain County Auditor's ACH in electronic transactions. Item F is appointment of the following legal counsel as needed in 2024. We have seven firms that we utilize for different, um, different areas. Item G is approval of 2024 OSBA Annual Membership, which is a membership that the board utilizes and also the district utilizes for legal advice for our membership for professional development and training as well. Item H is approval of the 2024 OSBA Legal Assistance Fund. Item I is approval of petty cash account for 2024. Item J, approval to appoint Barbara Reinhardt, Treasurer, as designated for the purpose of public records training as required by ORC 149.43.
Great. And then I just had a question about the resolution to approve Lorain County Auditor ACH in electronic transactions. Can you kind of shed some light on that, Bob?
Currently, the treasurer issues checks for all property taxes, all advances. And now the treasurer has agreed to transmit those funds electronically, and they want a resolution from the board saying that it's all right for me to set up the ACH with them.
Okay, and how does that make things, I mean, obviously, we can guess how it makes things easier.
That saves me from six times a year driving to the Alaria Office and picking up a $2 million check, $3 million check, transporting it to the bank. The bank holds it for three days, and we still don't have the money active, but it shows up there, we just can't use it till the check clears from the...
Yeah, they give you $150, but like I said, or something.
So what it does is, gives us money quicker.
Got it.
Because they'll put it in on Tuesday, we'll have it on Tuesday, and I can move it to investments on Wednesday.
Got it. Okay, thank you, I'm glad I asked.
Might be a little safer, too, than driving around with that.
Yeah. You got an armed guard with you to my check. Any other questions about any of the other items that we have for approval?
We have a community member question, is it inappropriate time to?
Oh, how do we do that in a meeting like this? Because we didn't do...
Yeah, we don't even have a sign-up sheet or anything.
No, well, she can ask a question. I mean, you're always allowed to let them.
Okay.
We're not authorized that we have to.
Okay, got you. Well, is your question related to the items that we just went over? Okay, if you'd come to the mic, just identify yourself, um, and, do they have the other address? No?
No.
Okay, you put that on the paper. Identify yourself and go ahead with your question.
Hi, Elisa Widenbaum. On Item F, seven law firms sound like a lot to me, so I'd be curious if you can speak to what, all the areas that you're using them for.
Sure. Law firms for education specialize in lots of little things, like special ed. We use a one law firm just for special ed. We use a law firm for employees. We use a law firm for tax codes, for like property, when somebody goes to the county auditor and says, my value should only be $100,000, it's $300,000. So we have somebody that takes care of that. We also have people trying to get property as tax-free. So he looks at all that paperwork to make sure that he's in agreement that they have that authorization to do that. And then we use a law firm also for, um, bonds, for our bond counsel, for selling bonds, for putting resolutions for our renewals for tax levies, so one law firm does that also. And then, um, we use other ones for just employee issues. Some of the law firms, since they represent us as a board, we can't use them to represent us in a suit against an employee. We have to use somebody that's outside of them because they already have our... So that's why we need so many different, you can't have the same law firm do the same work because they're connected together.
We have contract negotiations coming up too as well, so we utilize them for contract negotiations, like with teachers and the unions as well.
Yes.
And as an attorney, thank you for that question. As an attorney myself, I had the exact same question, and it does make sense because not every lawyer is an expert in every area. And after looking at the different attorneys that we've had to use over the years, we have experts handle the matters that are in their area of expertise. We don't just pick the general lawyer and hope they do a good job. So that's why we have so many of them.
And just clarifying, we don't hire all these lawyers every year.
No.
Right.
No, they, it's...
That's needed. When we need them, we'll call them. So they're not actually going to pay just to be here, but when we need them, we'll call them.
This gives us the right to use the one that we feel best suited for what we have.
And does it, I'm just curious, never thought of this before, does this, does this mean that, that, because if you, if a, if you get to a lawyer before the, before the other person gets to the lawyer, then that lawyer is, is committed to you. So does this mean that these, these lawyers would not then be able to take the other side?
Correct.
So we always, we get first dibs on these particular lawyers?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good point. Okay. Hearing no other questions? Okay, uh, please call the roll.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Okay, uh, that's it. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Uh, please call the roll.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Ann.